Here.
Here.
Stephan, here, Berenson, here, Lawhead.
Yes.
I declare the presence of a quorum and we may proceed.
Thank you. So we will open the meeting then and point out that there are posted the open meeting laws around the auditorium. And if you will stand and recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing on our agenda tonight is to swear in the two new council members who were elected in the special election held in March. There is, do you have, you guys have your, um, your oath with you? Is the oath in there?
I didn't put my own.
So it's, well, Sam, guys.
It's in my other one.
Put you right up here. Put you actually, once you come down here.
Okay.
And then I'll give you the mic.
Oh, oh, mic?
Yeah.
After you blew in it and ruined it?
All right. You're on a gotcha. I knew there was a reason to bar.
Mine says Arlene Stefan. Nobody knows. I, Don, may solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska against all men and enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely and without mental reservations for the purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of city council member according to the law and to the best of my ability. And I further swear that I do not advocate nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence, and that during such time as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. So help me God.
I, Arlene Stefan, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely and without mental reservation or the purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of city council member according to law and to the best of my ability. And I further swear that I do not advocate nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or this state by force or violence, and that during such time as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. So help me God.
I got yours.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the presentation of the one and six year plan. And we need to open a hearing at this point, right? And then, so at, what time is, at 6:38, we'll open that hearing. We'll open the hearing to hear the one and six year plan, and I'll turn it over to Stephen. You can go wherever you want.
Okay. Stay back here when it works. Okay, Mayor, Council, you should all have a copy of the proposed one and six year street plan. And so if you all look at the map, the map shows two projects in the one year plan and two projects, and the rest of the projects, those are in orange, and then the rest of the project, proposed projects are in the six year plan. So in the one year plan, and basically this is a carryover from last year's plan, so it basically mirrored that. These projects are in here, or what's being proposed are in the one and six year plan, but that doesn't mean you're committed to doing those, and we can always amend the plan during the year if you so desire. So, Project 17, that is the project that's in the one year plan. That's to reconstruct the intersections at Fifth and Kansas and Fifth and Main. The rest of the projects, as I mentioned, are in the six year plan. Project 14 is to construct Kansas Street from First Street, west a half a block to finish out the paving there. Project 12, that's on Fifth Street, from Iowa Street down to the highway. That would be by the school and, I believe it's the Catholic Church. And then also Fifth Street from the highway south to Omaha Street. That street, I believe, leads to the grain elevator facility. We've got Iowa Street from Fourth Street to Second Street. That's Project 13, that would be to reconstruct that. And Project 10 is on Second Street, and that is from the highway going south down to Knox Avenue, which leads out of town. And then Project 11, that would be to reconstruct First Street from the highway north to Iowa Street. And then Project 16, which is in, on Sunrise Street, from the highway north to where that street is. So as I mentioned, all those streets are, were in last year's plan. Doesn't mean you're committed to doing those. If there's something you would want to add, we can change it now. If there's something you want to take out, we can do that as well. So I did, I did have the opportunity, since the snow has finally gone, to drive through the streets in town, and just my initial take would be, to me, Project 17, the two intersections at, on Fifth Street from Kansas, at Kansas and Main, those are, I would think those should be priorities because those are really bad intersections. And that somewhat mirrors to what you've done in the past on other streets. You've got the, a lot of the intersections paved with concrete, and then you've got the curb and gutter and the asphalt armor coating out between those streets. In general, your streets aren't in terrible shape, but it's one of those things where there's always some street work to be done. So, I guess, any questions?
Do you usually go with the main thoroughfares first and then the other side streets, or does it just depend on the severity of the care that's needed?
I would say you try to take care of the main, the streets that have a lot of traffic, you know, if there's a need there, but otherwise, then you try to take care of problem areas, you know? And like I said, this is just my opinion, but in driving around, those two intersections are, seem like they're bad, but you have a better knowledge of it than I do, because I just drove through a few times. I kind of was driving around the South Canadian Wood.
Well, there's one little section, it's called Corus Street.
Okay.
When you go down over there, I mean, it looks like it's just a little path out in the field.
Right.
I mean, that, it looks kind of dumpy.
Is that?
This little section.
That piece right there?
Sure. Yeah, just look at it sometime.
We can, like I said, we can, we can sure add that in.
Michael lives on that street, wouldn't you say? It looks like a little trail out in the.
Ready it up to the center, the water keeps running in my back.
Some of the intersections with our, our, if you drive around with a train and stuff, the culverts and the grain things are very bad. It's kind of so bad.
Right.
Everybody else is wonderful. It's, it's somewhere that you can look at more closer.
Right.
We have big rain, big snow, and we are very lucky we don't have water damage as other communities have.
Right.
I can see where a lot of these intersections and some of these side streets need to cover any better, better drainage. Getting it, getting the water first instead of people's business.
Right. I mentioned, I mentioned this previous to, to the mayor, that when, if you want me to at some time, I would be happy to meet with any of you, the mayor, any of the council members, and we could go look at some of those places and, and put together, you know, put some costs together for that so you have an idea, and then you can potentially budget for it.
If we could get the waters, if we could get, I mean, coming in the spring and then it raining again, it could rain on the weekend, and we're saturated already, and our drains and the culverts and our intersections are really desperate need of some attention.
Right.
So the water gets away from people's homes and floods the basins, because that's what we have right now.
Sure. You just have to let me know, and I'll be happy to come up and we can look at that.
Just have to meet with our mayor.
Right. We guess, any, any questions from the audience?
I, I looked this thing over prior to the meeting. There's a couple of things that, that stand out to me. First of all, like I said earlier, I love the word concrete. You know, we haven't seen that in a, in a plan for a long time. My first question is, why are we going south on Second Street towards the elevator, from the highway south toward the elevator? We've spent over a million dollars to tie Sharon Street, or to open Sharon Street from 121, and that's a great addition to our town, but it connects with Second Street. And Second Street, north of the swimming pool, is a disaster. I would think maybe we should consider reconstructing Second Street from Sharon toward, toward Business District, because it's a major artery, people coming into town. One question, a couple of these projects include some curbing to areas that, that don't have curbs right now?
Yes.
Will that cost of the curbing be assessed to the property owners like it was all over town prior, or will the city have to pick that up?
Say that again, Joe. Ask that again, please.
In these projects that was going to require some curbing, for example, from the Argo, or the Trinity Lutheran Church going east, there is no curbing there.
Right.
And from the alley behind Brian's office to First Street, there's no curbing on either side of that street. Will that cost for the curbing in those areas be assessed to the property owners like it was for everybody else all over town, or will the city pick up the cost of the curbing?
I would ask a lawyer if I'm correct here, but I think before you can assess anything to the people, you have to have a plan and make that district. You have to make it a district of re-improvement and then set it up for it.
You have a street, you create a street improvement district to pronounce it, and that is subject to the city council to determine whether or not the city is going to pay it or whether they're going to assess it to the property owner.
But you have to establish that district before the project ever starts in the whole areas, as to whether you're willing to pay for that. Okay? So you have a say in it before it ever starts.
Well, there's that we've already done.
Pardon me?
With this street plan.
No, that's not the same thing. This is just our engineer saying that this is a plan of things that need to be done in our city, and like he said, it is not binding, this, this is the same plan we had last year, none of it got that.
Same plan we've had for about seven years.
About seven years, yeah. But, but, but you have to have something, and, and, and what is, what does go towards that, because some of these little areas have had potholes and stuff fixed, I mean, it's not completely.
I understand.
But, but his job is to tell you what you need to do, and then account for the money that the state gives us, whether it was used wisely, is that correct?
Right. So this is, this is a concept, a concept of potential streets. If the mayor and the council decided to move forward with any of those streets, and there was curb and gutter and those types of things, then at a later date, if the project would move forward, going to the proper process of creating a district, then it would be decided, is there going to be an assessment or not? At this point, that's not, we're not talking about that. That would be later, to that discussion.
And one last comment, Iowa Street from Fifth Street to 121, that's a major route into town. And there's nothing addressed there at all. And that street's in bad shape. It needs curb and gutter, it needs resurfacing, and I think Iowa Street is an area that has a problem with water main, if I'm not wrong, or at least one, at one time it did. So maybe that would be a suggestion. And then also Main Street from Third Street to 121. And a lot of that's going to be improved with the intersection, interacted by the UCC Church there, which is in bad shape. But that's the other major artery coming into town. So we've got three major arteries, Iowa, Main, and Sharon, okay? That come into town, or in and out of town. We haven't addressed Iowa and Main, and we're leaving Sharon Street alone, but it butts into Second Street, and I think if you drive that way, everyone will talk to you. From Sharon Street.
I don't think that it was ever intended to be a Main Street as a town, but that's what it certainly intended.
Well, we won't go there.
Yeah.
We just won't go there. What I'd say is, we've got to do something with Second Street from that area to the uptown area, especially where it comes in, what's, what's the road there? 891st Road. So I guess.
Yep.
I would just suggest that you consider some of those things.
Sure.
Let's talk about the others.
Yes, sir.
Oh, Steve, what happened to 15? We're going from 14 to 16?
Um, I'm not sure.
It must be Sharon Street.
Oh, I think, I think, I think 15, I think 15 was the, there was, there was a project, I think it was at the intersection of Kansas and First, and it was, and, and it was like to do that intersection, and it's like, I didn't see why that intersection would have to be redone, so I took it out. I didn't, to me, the intersection at Iowa and First, that's bad. I mean, that pavement is really broken up there, so. But this is my suggestion, would be, you made some good comments, is that the mayor and the, the mayor and the council adopt this plan for right now, but then this year, we set up a time to meet and kind of do a site visit through town and look at things, because the mayor and the council know, and others know where problem areas are, or where maybe were priorities, and then we can look at that, and then next year, probably have a better one and six plan addressing some of those things, some of those things. So that'd be my suggestion. We need to do that, we need to adopt this one and six year plan so that the city gets the highway allocation money from the state, so we really, we really need to do that at this meeting.
Yeah, because it was due first of March.
Right.
And we hate to come in and say, well, we have to do this without, you know, but, but remember that it can be, things can be added, and I am working on a committee, Joe, maybe I need to talk with you, of people to work on streets in priority.
But I got a question to answer, Joe, is he concerned about the, the cost, you know, who's going to pick up the tab? I think there's programs out there, because I've talked to other people in different towns, and they're getting grants to do their streets in their towns and their waters in their towns. So if we would adopt this as a starting point, and then we go look for the grants, and we can help our city streets in our town here to help take the cost out of our progress. You know, there's grants out there, we just got to apply, and we got to put stuff forward, but it's just, this is our first step of getting something, that we get our money coming from our state.
Oh, excuse me. Also on the curb issue, we moved to town back in 91 when they were first putting in those curbs, and the property owners did pay for them. I would like to think that the city would not stray from that, because that has been the history of the town, and we wouldn't change that, so if, we need to put curb and gutter on streets, I believe, that's my opinion, that I would think the owner of the property would be assessed that, because that's what we have been doing, and I think it's something we need to have that continuation of.
And then again, and that, that requires that setting up a district and, and, or having that head of time, because you can't do that without that district established. Am I right on that? Okay, any other comments? Okay, that we call for, which is close the meeting. So we will close this hearing at this time. It's 6:55. And then we will call for a vote from the council on accepting the plan, so if I could entertain a motion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we approve the six and one plan for 2019.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Pam and seconded by Larry to accept the one and six. I'll call for the vote. Don?
Yes.
And Arlene?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
And so that would, vote carry, will carry that, and we will pass that, the vote carries that, we will accept that. Okay, um, okay, we need to approve the, approve the minutes or suggest any amendments to the most recent meeting minutes, and you should all have those in your packets. So if you've had a chance to look at those.
If you read the newspaper, you already have them.
Anybody that has, wants any time on that?
We have to move on.
Yes, give me the dates on those, Pam.
This one is February 13.
February 13 was the regular meeting, and then we had a special meeting on the 19th, and those were, are both in, and were in the, I think they both.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 13th and 19th city minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Larry and seconded by Arlene to approve the minutes for the February 13 and the February 19 meetings. So, Arlene?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
And that carries that motion. So now, we've come up with, the next thing on the agenda is the liquor license of Doug and Julie DeCheser, and then, and S D L also. Are they here? There you are, Joe. You want to come up, kind of explain what's going on a little bit.
Yeah. So just kind of a quick update on what we're doing here. We, the catering business that Doug and I have is applying for a permanent liquor license. That, that process is in place, and it will take probably several more weeks. Because of a timing issue, we also want to host another event at, as a fundraiser for the Crafted Historical Center. If any of you were familiar with the Oktoberfest we had in the fall, that was our first fundraiser for the, of the historical center, and this was going to be another one. So for that, the historical center, as a nonprofit, is asking for the S D L, for Oktoberfest, or I mean, Bockfest is what it's called for spring beers, apparently in Germany, that's what it's called. So, but that will be separate from our regular license that will then be in place going forward, but that's for catering business. So that's why there's two different things going on at the, at present, and two different things in the pipe at the same time. So, any other questions? Do we have any out here?
Now, we're trying to accommodate this group so that if, if we go with a permanent liquor license, we have to have a hearing, and we can't, with that, and we have to set that up in the future, and we've agreed to do that on any date that you need to have it done.
Sure.
In the meantime, we as a council can approve this S D L, and then you just deal with the state, and you take care of it.
Correct.
So we have no objections, or I have no objections to this, and so I would, at this time, ask the council for an approval of this S D L so that they can go ahead with their, they've been working on this for a while.
Right, yeah.
In other words, and, and.
We didn't know these two things were going to coincide coming down the pipe at the same time.
Right, right, and, and so, and I know the states have called me, and they said they're working on it, and they're doing what they need to do, and we've talked about this before, that, that you're trying to get things in order, so.
So then the permanent license, you have to have a hearing on?
We have to, we'll have to have a hearing, yeah.
Okay.
And we'll set that up for another date if we have to. I think we've already set a date for that, the 28th, yes, we can have a quick hearing date on that.
Okay. That'll be in the union?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the, when you say S D Ls, everybody knows out there, and you're talking about the special designated license.
Special designated license, which is Joe had said is for this, just this one time thing.
Temporary, yeah. It's an event license.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's open to either nonprofits or.
Or permanent license holders, if they're hosting it somewhere that's not covered by the license.
Right, right, or just, just, okay. And you've had two of these people, so they're.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is the last one, so we're hoping that permanent one goes through right.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I would ask if anybody would make a motion to approve that S D L license.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Who is that?
Larry.
Larry? Okay, so Pam made the motion, Larry seconded, so I would ask Larry?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Arlene?
Yes.
Okay. Then we have another special designated license, S D L, from the American Legion for wedding reception for Jana Schiefer, and that's for May 18. So again, we can, that's in the works, you've got all that, again, all we have to do is approve it, so if anybody would, if nobody has any objections to that, I would entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Schiefer.
Okay, motion by Arlene.
I'll second it.
Pam seconded, so, start that with Pam?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay. We would like to welcome Gary and Karen Leader to the meeting. They would like to. They would like to talk to us about the status of the water mains. They have some direct experience, come on up, guys. I might say that, just before they start here, that most of us are well aware that we have some issues with a lot of infrastructure. I was quite surprised to hear Steve say, well, your streets aren't too bad. I'm wondering, what are those other towns like? That's okay, you're fine.
Got it. First of all, I wanna thank you all for allowing us to talk. Yes, for being on the council and everything else, um.
Just a little Karen, so they can hear you through.
I'm not sure it's necessary that we're here, but after what we have gone through since the fourteenth of February, Valentine's Day, um, I just wanna make you aware, which I'm sure everybody is, but I'd like to get it in the minutes, so that, just like the streets, it's been the same plan for eight years, or ten years, or twelve years, I'm sure this has been an issue, I've read it in the paper, two thousand and eight, we are already dealing with these, I guess I would like some action on it. I don't know that it's necessary, it's not something that's gonna be fixed overnight, it's probably not something that's gonna be fixed in ten years, but I'd like it to have a plan. Going through what we all did, and, and this is very minimal, I mean, when I got on the agenda with Kathy two or three weeks ago, I don't know, we've dealt with a lot, and yet it's nothing compared to what everybody else is going through, but I think it's something that needs to be addressed in a plan somehow, some way, whether it's through grant money or something, um, everybody I've talked to said, we know that there's an issue, but we just haven't done nothing about it. We got new council members, I appreciate that, we appreciate that, um, I talked with Ryan, our insurance came, did an adjustment, forty-five hundred dollars damage in less than twelve hours, which isn't a whole lot any day anymore. Right, but, um, it's, it's. And we talked to our insurance, they came and adjusted it, they said if it was the city lane, city line, same, city main, they weren't gonna cover it, so I contacted Ryan, I talked to Kathy and said, who's your insurance? She said Ryan, Ryan said he would get with Cheryl, they come in, the next day the adjuster was there. Lo and behold, we did receive a letter from the city's insurance, basically saying that, by both the city's statement and your statement, the cause of the damage was due to water main break. There is no indication that there was a maintenance problem. The city was unaware of the situation, and therefore did not breach any duties. Since there is no indication or evidence suggesting the city knew, or should have known, about the potential water main break, there is no negligence on behalf of the city, and we must respectfully deny your claim. In our opinion, we feel there is negligence, we feel the city has been aware of it for many years, and has not opted to do anything about it. That's, I guess what we're asking for, is to act upon it, I know it's not done in one meeting, probably in one year. That's what we're asking for. I was downstairs in our basement against the north wall, the two north rooms is what got flooded. I was downstairs at eight-thirty that night, did not notice any water. The next morning at seven-thirty, he went down two stairs and noticed the water, in less than twelve hours. We know that the neighbor to the north, or to the west, had it less than a year ago, or right of a year ago, and we've known of three, Tim Arns told him, there was four bills he was submitting to the city for water line breaks, ours and three others after that. I talked to Cheryl about it a little bit, and I guess the comment she made was, what we're being charged from rural water, Cedar Knox Rural Water, is about half of what we're charging the customers. I have no idea what that bill is, but that alone could save you some money. Number two, the bill from Tim Arns, or whoever fixes the repairs, could save you some money. The inconvenience that not only us, but everybody on our street that had no water, we had the preschool that came over and talked to the city crew, which, the city crew did a great job once they found out, and nothing against that, they come over and say, how long are we, we gonna be without this water? They resubferred their kids to a different area so they could continue to have preschool. If this was done in a plan, the people can be informed, it's gonna be an inconvenience, I understand that, but I just, please ask, and act on it.
Thank you. And this is what, um, as we said with the streets, the infrastructure, we know, needs attention. And we are under the gun with the sewer system. We have no choice because of, you know, mandate, we, but we know that we're having more problems with the water than we are with sewer at this point. But we've got, but we will, I pledge, I pledge that we will keep working on this, we will do this, okay? I think that's what you, you want everybody to know.
I wanted in the minutes that there is an issue, because you talk to everybody in town, they all know it's an issue. I think the street, I mean, I was told that the, um, the smoke signal where it's actually technically called, they had so much problem with their driveway, their, their whatever, they finally put a whole new lane in there, or new line in there, because it was just supposed to saturate with water. How many millions of gallons of water were in there? How many of that we're losing from the city, that the city's paying for, that's not being charged to anybody? I think that's probably the problem, and I'm not, engineering wise, the problem with the way even the highway there.
Can I add something here?
Sure.
I've been talking to a, a guy that does underground boring, and I know there's a problem, I'm in construction my whole life. Anyway, I've, I've been talking to him, and my theory is, and I've told Cheryl about it already, I think the old part of town's got galvanized pipe, everybody knows that, old houses, mine included, at one time had a galvanized pipe. We're losing water from the city curb stop, and losing it before it gets to your meter in the house. So what I'm suggesting, and with the board approval later on, after we get things done here, later down the line, I would like to go to all the old houses with the city workers and see who's got galvanized lines in their house, and you should be able to look in your basement where your line comes into your water. If it's galvanized line, you might be potential of having just what happened here with the, the leaders. My suggestion is that we'll dig by each curb stop, if the curb stop is a problem, we need to fix it, it's our problem. But it's the line from the curb stop to the city, or to the homeowner, they can bore a line in, and most of this can be done underground, so you don't have, you have to dig next to the house, so it gets into your house without too much demolition on your home. And I talked to an individual, and he's thinking about buying a machine, if the city does this plan, which we're just talking right now, with, I'm talking with him. So we do have a, a plan, that, that we are, I wanna check every old house, or these new houses up in the, the new additions should all have plastic pipe, and this, and I talked to this guy, and he said, anything that's a, I don't know what the proper name is, it's that plastic that don't have no joints or nothing in, you put them in there, we solve the problem to the homeowner, if our curb stop is good, it'll take it, there should be no problem there at all. I'm not saying it's gonna be perfect, but it's not gonna have a galvanized leak that's, we're losing water. Every month we're losing water, that down there, that's been a, that's been a cesspool all my life, I haven't seen it. Water's been going out someplace along the line. So I am pursuing this for the city, but the only thing is, people are gonna have to be responsible that they're gonna, and I had Tim Arns pull one in for me, 'cause there was a curb stop problem on my property, and Tim Arns says, well, while we're here, why don't we just pull the line in? And I did, it cost me, I think he charged me five hundred dollars to pull it in, he hooked it up, hooked it up to the curb stop, and I'm, I'm worry free. And I think a lot of people in town need to go in their basements to see what they have, they got plastic, they're probably not potential of having a, a water break that's gonna cause a major problem in your house. Or we're city losing water constantly, and we don't know where it's going, 'cause it's not been metered. Does everybody understand what's going on there? I think we need to, you know, this summer, when it gets warmer, go in everybody's house, it's an old house, everybody knows whose old house is in town, it's in the old part of town, and go and see what they have for a, a pipe coming into the water line.
But that's inside the houses.
Inside the house.
And that, she's talking about the main, too, so that's, that's, that's kind of.
We gotta dig up next to the curb stop, to dig that up, and this guy said he would buy a machine, and he could dig a hole, and he could vertically go in, into, into the home, but you have to dig a hole next to the house, because he's pushing water to drill his line through there, you'll have to dig a hole there, and have to have a plumber, and the people would have to pay for the plumber, and pay, he told me he would get so much afoot, some people only got forty feet, some people only got twenty feet to their, their shut off to the, to the house. Everybody's different, because the houses sit differently in, in this town when the water is shut off, so.
But Karen wants us to look at the main, though. I think, but Karen wants us to look at our main, not.
We have to dig a hole right there where the, where the curb stop is, right, where you had that problem, and we'll check that out.
But theirs came from a break in the main, Larry, not in their block, so.
It's a start, that we can check everything, you know, but.
The homeowners can, can, can take that part, but is the city gonna do anything with their, right?
Right, that's a city problem.
And I, I need to say.
It, it's a city problem, but, but they won't do anything about it.
Well.
It's, it's, yeah, it's neglect. I feel it's neglect on the city's part, because they haven't dealt or addressed the issue for how many years? That's in the past, I'm asking you to address the issue from here forward.
I'm planning on trying to pursue this thing, so we can address.
We found it less than twelve hours.
Yep.
We have neighbors who are gone for the winter, I don't know how often they check it.
Would you stay?
Even in a day's time, if you were to have gone down there that morning at seven-thirty.
Your house would have floated away, yeah.
Yeah, we would have had it all the way to the back, and ten times.
And, and, and Karen, I do need to say that, uh, Steve, you, you're, one of your engineers did a study, survey study for us, on that water main. For twelve, I, I asked him to do a survey to, for cost and whatever, and I asked for a new main all the way through, next to Highway twelve. So I don't know whether there's gonna be any, we're looking at funds and stuff, but I think he sent me that, it's something like five hundred and some thousand dollars, we could put a brand new main all the way through there.
When I, when I visited with the gentleman from Omaha, with the insurance gentleman, adjuster from Omaha, he said they know that they have the same issue in Omaha, but they have a plan, and a twenty-year plan to replace every line in Omaha. And I understand that's a whole bigger construction or whatever, but it's just, everything is.
Right.
I'm just asking for a plan to.
And a plan, and, and there again, I, I do not, we are in the process of doing committees, and I know committee is sometimes a word that means, well, everybody comes and sits around and talks and gets nothing done. And I don't want that, but I do, I am trying to put together committees for water, sewer, and streets, and then bring those together with what waters, what money's available, what can we do this year, in which division, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm still looking for a few more hands on that, so, um, but it's getting there. So, um, I appreciate, I appreciate you coming, Karen, I appreciate you coming, and Gary, I don't mean to leave you out.
I would just like to, like to say that I don't necessarily agree how insurance works, you know, you pay these bills, and premiums, and that, but, you know, I feel for you, I wish we would have paid, but we're not the, the adjuster, we don't do that. But hopefully we can get that taken care of, but, you know, can't see in the ground, and, you know, and thank God we're not having newer pipes break, but that, they can break just as easy when the ground shifts. So, but we, we will try and get some answers to how we can get this, but we gotta balance it all out with the sewer system, Sharon Street, and, you know, there's that swimming pool lurking around out here, so here we go.
We're building the swimming pool first. 'Cause we got the water. No, just kidding, you know that. Um, okay, are we moving on? We have, uh, the fire department will be closing streets for homes, Ted, but who wants to talk about that? Okay.
We just wanna close Third Street from Iowa to Highway twelve on the eighteenth of April, to test our homes.
For how long?
The day.
The whole day? Eighteenth, um, from, tell me again, from Third, from Iowa.
Iowa Street to Highway twelve, first.
Okay, um, we'll get that out, if, do we have to have a vote on that? Okay, we need a motion, say that that's okay then.
Our motion that, uh, we close Iowa Street to Highway twelve on April eighteenth, for the fire department.
I'll second it.
Dawn seconded, um, so, we'll start with Dawn.
Yes.
Arlene.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
And Pam.
Yes.
Okay, uh, then Alex, um, you're up again. Oh, that's Michael, I'm sorry, Alex, I'm sorry, guys darn it, Alex is, where's Alex?
Wayne's back.
Alex. Yeah, I just looked, sorry, Michael. I just thought there was a gun throw up here. Well, I don't know, I, did.
What do you want?
What do you want? You must have talked to Kathy, that you were on the agenda.
Yeah, for that, uh, Northside Acres.
Okay, so what do you want?
I'd like to purchase some properties to the south, to plant some trees.
South of your building?
Yes.
And, you know, how, one acre, two acre, what are you looking at?
Whatever, I can, whatever I need to.
Do you want the whole piece of pot?
Depends on the price.
Okay, so you, okay, let, let me see if I can start this right, because I talked to you on the phone, and we never got anywhere with what was, what you really want.
You were gonna look.
You've gotta decide what you want, first of all, secondly, we need to contact, we need to talk to the people on the planning and zoning, because you have to decide what you wanna do with that property, okay?
Plant trees.
And you want just a shelter belt, or do you want?
Yes.
Okay, and then you need to know how much property you want. The planning and zoning will go in and say, is that allowable, that we just add trees out there? And then we're gonna say, okay, if there's no objections to that, then that's okay for that purpose. So each place in town has a zoning ordinance that says what can be happened. So, um, then we'll have to set a price, and then your own grade.
Sure.
So what's, what's your issue, what's, what are you asking?
Doesn't have to be a bit.
It does, if it's over five thousand dollars.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Now, start.
There's a special procedure that the city has to go through to sell property.
I understand, I'm familiar with that. Because they didn't do it the last time.
Right, and he needs to talk to you, this is our attorney, Kevin Alley, so, and he, and he's already kind of like a platter, so, maybe you guys could.
Well, yeah, first, first of all, we know what kind of property you want, but what's the description in it?
We already have property there, we just want something more to the south to put in a shelter belt, but it's up to you when you're gonna give me.
No, it's, see, those are already platter.
No, they're not. Are they platted?
Well, from what I've seen in the paperwork, they had them marked out in, in, in the law.
That's a platter.
That one, that.
But did it ever get, go through the county?
I don't know, I don't know, Michael.
As far as I know, yes, they did, they were one acre pot. As far as I know, yes, they did. They were one acre plot.
No, they weren't.
Okay, then why?
I don't know. What we have to do is see how it's done. I wanna know if.
All I want is, okay, if there's a lot next to mine, I would like to buy it. That's all I ask.
Okay, so, so you don't care how big the lot is, as long as you put that lot next to you, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But I don't think it's plotted out.
I was just trying to figure out the length of the lots, because I, just what I'd seen on paper. Delved into it too much because I had my head stuck in water. But, um, I was just wondering if your lot runs like this and if for some reason they got them done like this with lots. You know, did you buy one whole lot when you bought that, or one part of it?
And I asked you that, you said you thought it was different than the rest.
Okay, well, we'll just have to, we'll have to have Mike.
So how long story?
Well, so.
I bought it from Nancy, Linda and Wendell.
Yes, what, Michael?
He's got the smallest lot.
So they were lots, so they had to be plotted?
No.
That one was done separately because that one was only two acres. All the others are three.
It had to be over three acres or DQ.
The rest of it's not final planted and documented at the county. She's saying it's plotted.
How much?
Twenty-six point two-five acre piece of ground that the city owns.
Okay.
And that's it. And I got the, it started out at one.
That's only eight acres all of them without having a alignment drawn.
Well, from the documentation that I see, it, it probably wasn't done correctly.
I know it wasn't because Charlie, uh, I don't even want to do it.
And you're talking about the same as much as anything. Can you, will you do this? If I promise you that I will put Mike Chase, who is now our head of planning and zoning, into finding out if there is a plot, if there is a map, if there's anything that's been decided and what size they are. And then we will let you know that. I've asked him to look into that, okay? And then, then if, if they're bigger size than you want to buy, then we'll look into subdividing it, if that's what you wanna do and what that process has to be.
It is what it is. It's three and it's three.
And you, and that's okay.
Well, it all depends on the price.
Well, okay, I understand that, Michael. Or, Michael, now I'm calling off.
That's Michael.
You guys just kinda merge into one here. Alex, but you've got to give us some direction as to what you want.
I want south of that place.
What, what is the minimum you would take first, max? Can you give us, you don't care? Okay, all right. Well, how far away do you want your next closest neighborhood?
How many real trees do you want? Do you want root trees or do you want, I mean, we need to.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just, I don't think it's plotted.
Okay.
Is it plotting?
It's plotted on paper, but not, or it's just the idea, in the idea.
That's what I just told you that I would look into, sir. So if, if you don't think it is, we will prove it one way or another. They will know it's a courthouse.
Okay, that's what I've just looked at.
We have just affirmed, Michael, as our planning and zoning person, and he can find that. He just got back from carney from school, so he's got all kinds of knowledge.
Okay, that's all I ask.
All right, let me do that. Thank you. Ryan, how would you like to get beat out? Here we go.
Good evening, welcome new council. Um, before I start on the insurance renewal, I'll, I'll address the, since you just brought up the liability claim. And this, this was explained to me by the adjuster on the telephone. Doesn't agree with it, just, and, and he basically stated, there's something called the Nebraska Municipalities Tort Claim Law. Counsel, stop me if I'm, if I'm off there. Very lengthy document. Um, it's basically designed, the state has decided, they put a lot of protections in for municipalities. And all liability claims are on a case by case basis. This one really had two factors, um, okay? Did the city know there was, there was an issue with that section of pipe? They didn't, okay? The other part is, how quick was the city's response? When, when, um, when the city was called that morning, I think they were there within about a half hour to an hour and shut the water. And very quick response. Had, had the city been called and it maybe took two, three, four, five hours, that would be some negligence there. Had the, had the city known that pipe was leaking and said, well, we'll, you know, we'll deal with it Monday? That's also an issue. The other, um, and maybe this is to Karen's point, the other thing that could create a claim is, let's say, down the line, the city adopts a, a four-year plan to replace all pipes, okay? And we're in year two of this plan and a particular street that's on year three has the same type of issue. Being the city has acknowledged there's issues, they're starting the process and haven't completed it yet, that could create a liability payout there. So, so I just wanna address that first. And I, it doesn't mean I agree with it, but it's basically to, to protect the city against, if, you know, your, your, your infrastructure, if, if there's no limit on it, you'd have really no limit to liability payout claims. You could say, well, your streets are icy, that's why I slid into that tree. Pay for my vehicle, you know, there's no limit if there's no protection, so, okay. So, um, any questions on that otherwise, so? Um, other than that, I think everybody got a packet today. I just kinda dropped off. That's kind of an easy to read summary of the renewal that everybody's got, kinda broke it down into sections. Um, the, um, and I don't wanna go too in depth of this. I know you guys have a, have a lot to cover at the meeting. Um, but basically the properties under what's called a blanket coverage. Every item is listed separately. There's an amount listed. But the advantage of the blanket is, should something happen to one of the structures and the limit you have is not enough to cover that damage, with the blanket being there, you'd have a little more money available to help cover that. So, the blanket's basically all of, that amount is all of the personal property and structures around town. Anywhere from sewer, sewer plants, about half of that, pretty close, all the structures there. Auditorium, everything in the parks, um, swimming pool, all the buildings, so. Yep. Liability is based on, um, different categories are based on different things. The town liability is based on number of residents from the last census. Um, swimming pool is based on gross sales. The in the marine, law enforcement is, is basically liability to, you know, in, in, basically liability protects the city if someone, if law enforcement has a claim against them. Since you guys employ police officers, so. Yeah, in the marine is basically your equipment that goes, um, is mobile, your payloaders, maintainer, street sweeper, that sort of thing. Um, and then there's the autos, they're all listed there. You can kinda tell by the premium charge which ones have comp inclusion on them.
Are all these vehicles hiding out in the maintenance yard? Did you, did you guys, do we have all these new?
Yeah, sure, sure. When I reviewed them, went through them, yeah, and I think, I think it's pretty current, yeah, so. Yep.
Can I ask a question on general I live? What's that additional insured, uh, nation's credit with Cadence International?
Yep, that is, um, I believe you have a skid loader leased from Cadence. So they're listed as additionally insured on there. When you lease or rent one.
Okay, and then what's the other one below it?
That is for, um, for your copy machine, I believe. Or it's a piece of office machinery that you leased.
Okay, that would be the company.
Yep, yep. And, and they, they basically, it, it basically, it shows them that you have, you insured for it, so. Yep, yep. And should that copy machine start on fire and burn the office down, it, it excludes them from being liable, basically, is what it is, by them being named as insured on there. Yep, so. Does that sound right? Uh, page two is basically, a couple of sections there. The work comp is on top. Obviously, that's based on, um, payrolls for different portions of what they're doing. Um, the experience modification factor you guys have is point eight nine, which is good. Um, I'll explain that quickly. Um, anyone in the state of Nebraska who pays over, I believe it's four thousand dollars an annual premium, has what's called an experience modification factor. And that, that factor stays with you as a city, no matter who you buy your insurance from. The factor is determined by a, a company called NCCI, which is Nebraska, or National Comp. Um, and, um, they set it for the whole state. And they do about, I think, nineteen other states also. Um, anything below one is good, because what it's doing, it's at point eight nine, it's saving you eleven percent off your premium. Because you've had good loss experience. That factor is always a year late in their figures. So they're not including twenty eighteen in their figure. They're including seventeen, sixteen, fifteen. They take those three years, okay? Um, so in eighteen, now for next year, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen will be in there. So you might expect an increase in that next year because there was a work comp payout this last year.
That's right.
So, that'll affect it some, so, yep. Um, you were point eight seven last year, so when, so a little, anything under one's good, so, yep.
It was point eight seven.
Yeah, last year was point eight seven, so. And how they come up with that, there's really three main factors. They take what you're doing. Um, they take how many claims you've had and how much each claim paid out. Those are the three main factors in coming up. So, you know, insurance companies don't expect to take your money on a work comp and never have a payout. But it just depends on what it is, what type of injury and frequency, so, yep. Um, below that is the linebacker. The linebacker is a fancy name for a package of liability coverages which protects you guys as a board. Um, basically in case somebody would sue the board for something you've done as an action or sue you guys individually as an action you did as a board member. That's what protects you. Um, linebacker premium went up this year. Um, the last couple of years, they've seen a large increase in those just for the first time in years. So that's, it's kind of, you know, it's based on size of your town is where they come up with that number. Um, and then the last portion is the umbrella, which is just extra liability for you. Um, it, it's basically over and above all your exposures, auto and, and everything else.
Do you have a limit on, excuse me, do you have a limit on that, the umbrella?
I believe it's two million, Cheryl. I get.
We looked at that the other day.
Yeah, we looked at it, I think.
Pretty big, yeah, right up there.
Yep, I'd have to look for sure.
Is that what you said, that kind of company, everybody that is involved with the city, like, taking chickens and stuff? That they were working with the city or like that one we were talking about?
That's, that's the work comp. That'd be, yeah, it, it, yeah, the umbrella basically is, is you have a million dollar limit now, like on your auto policy, okay? Um, somebody jumps in a city pickup and is at fault in a, in an auto accident. And, and in the other vehicle, maybe it's a bus, and there's, there's some, there's some, there's some fatalities.
So it goes over and above what that?
Yep, if, if there's a judgment against the city for one point five million, the primary policy would pay the one million, the umbrella would pay the additional, so, yep.
And then we pay this premium over the twelve month period?
Yep, it's, it's set up on monthly, yep, yep. And, and actually, that's your choice, I mean.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, they'll give any break for that, but.
I was gonna say, it'll get a cheaper.
Yeah, no, they don't. I wish they did, but, yeah. No paid full discount, so.
For those of you who don't have this in front of you, I'm gonna, that's forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars is the insurance premium. So, um, insurance isn't cheap, but it's, but, but there's a lot of, a lot of coverage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
And I drill, I may have a little. Okay, so we now have a plat survey of Chad and Kim Gunther's property. Um, I don't think that there's any questions about this. They just, um, there was a division in the property from Donnie Gunther's that, so that they could build their house and their planning and zoning is all okayed already. Um, all we have to do is do the plat, then that goes to county. Is that right, Kathy, if I got that right? So once we apply for, or once we approve it, then that goes into our records and it's also filed with the county. That's what we were talking about, the Northside Acres, if that had been planted. And I, I can't see us selling any part of it without it though, but I may be wrong. Anyway. Um, so I need a motion to approve that, uh, for Ken and, and this, yeah, here, yes. Um, that's our very own Tim Gobel did the survey on that.
Just a copy?
Yeah. So it just divides out that end of the, that, I think they have this, the piece next to the highway. Gonna build a big, beautiful, a nice, beautiful home. I'll say it's big, I don't know if they get it. Nice big home, nice, beautiful. And they told me that just as soon as the ground was drying up and, and thawed enough, they were putting a shovel and a dirt, so hopefully. So I would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion to approve the Chad and Kim.
Motion by Arlene to approve that plat, seconded by?
I'll second.
Don, and so the vote will go Arlene?
Yes.
Uh, Larry?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
Okay, now we have the Black Hills Energy.
Yes.
There you are.
Right. Well, I, I mean, I think Mr. McAlley was kinda more dealing with this than really Iowa. I was in the background watching emails, but he, he had some requests that we'd like to keep the franchise fee, franchise agreement separate. He requested that we put, yeah, we did do that. That's really the biggest change we did. Um, I guess GMI, you and Melissa and Adam worked together the most.
I have, I reviewed the agreement. Um, I have some changes on the wording to make. And the corporate council, some, Kelly and Callie, we talked about it. And he accepted the wording changes that I suggested. The occupation tax ordinance and franchise ordinance have been combined into one document. It provides that the occupation tax will be point zero zero eight seven per term. And that is paid to the city, that's not the patient tax. I think it's paid either semi-hangly or quarterly. It amounts to about sixteen hundred dollars every time payment is made. And I recommend the city go ahead and adopt it because it really has no options because you don't have any.
Other gas company in town. Well, it's supposed to be warmer yet.
I would love to say in defense of Black Hills Energy that when you took the meters out and put those gas lines into the houses, I was very happy with that. And, uh, I got to see some of that boring end of lines because it was a piece of wood and I came out the house and I said, oh, can I follow you a long and see the ground and see what you're doing? Yeah, um, so, um, Jim's recommendation also, then we would entertain a motion to, um, renew that twenty-five year lease. So can I have a motion on that?
I'll motion to accept the Black Hills Energy, um, distribution with the city for often.
Okay.
Franchise.
Franchise agreement.
Franchise agreement. Franchise agreement, I'm looking for the word.
Yeah.
There it is, franchise agreement with the city of Crofton, it's twenty-five year.
Twenty-five year lease, yep.
I'll second that.
By Larry, and so the vote will be, um, Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Arlene?
Yes.
Okay, item number nine is the use of the auditorium by Crofton's, oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm just moving on.
I just wanted to say one more thing, Dan. I, we don't want to do this and just leave your community type of thing, that we, we have things that we do, donations, fire departments, we love to help out, uh, we want to be active in your communities. So I don't want to be like, thanks for signing the lease. So you have Melissa's information.
Yes.
Don, please tell us what the supervisor gave you my information.
Yes.
You never need anything, donations, we have different grants we can apply for to help the community, so.
We'll be looking for them.
Right.
You heard what, you heard what we need here, it's not. We'll, we'll run those water lines right along here, the gas line.
No, not boring and stuff, but, I mean, and, and again, with your systems, we do survey every five years, every single line we have in here, we survey for a leak, atmospheric corrosion, we survey it for three years, to make sure our lines are pathologically protected, that means that it's not, uh, current, that you wouldn't believe it, but the pipe actually carries electric current in the ground. No, it can corrode rapidly, but not take the care of it, so. Do that, and we replace meters annually, so, once you think we're not just signing this and we're leaving, we do keep our systems up.
Good.
Just wanted to make that clear, thanks again Jim for working with us, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. The use of the auditorium by the school for golf practice, and I believe that's already over. Do we even need to do anything with that? No. What we did, um, you know, you saw this weather, and Luke came in and said, could we use the auditorium for golf practice? And I said, really? Oh, nerve, what, see, I'm so out of it. But he said, that gets pretty boring when you're hitting it down the hallways to school. So, so we made a deal with him, that he could use it for practice, if when he was all done, he'd come in and scrub the floors, so he did. So, I think they're done. Where are we?
Ten.
Number ten, okay. The employment of economic development director and lifeguards. I'll bet I didn't bring my list of lifeguards, but that's all right. I would like to introduce you to Kalina Enrum, would you stand? You want to say anything?
I didn't really prepare anything, but I guess, um, if you do motion that, like, if one of your employees sign up on or to be the new director of economic development, and I do look forward to working with, um, back here, and, um, the economic committee, and also being able to, um, create Crofton's pool to continue our role as well.
Thank you, thank you. And I need to say also that that is not a full-time job, so that, you know, that's kind of hard to get somebody that's totally enthusiastic about something when it's not full-time. So, um, I woke up one morning and said, I think Kalina might be pretty good for this, I gotta talk to her. And she has some talents in the office, she's pretty good with websites and computers, she's already cleaning up a few. We need a little bit of help in the office every now and then, and, uh, we need help with, um, I said, you know what, a girl can do maintenance too, by golly, she can be out there reading meters, or mowing grass, or whatever. So we have offered her a full-time position right now, um, and she'll have a varied amount of activities, but I'm really looking forward to working with her, but I need to get approval from the board.
Does she get stuck in watering holes instead of me now?
Yeah, yeah. She might even get to do some of them, so, yeah, she'll be working on some of the work there in the office. I also, um, I, I would like for us to approve Kalina and Nikki Sprockle tonight. Nikki Sprockle will be the overall manager of the pool. Then there is a list of, um, lifeguards, I didn't bring it with me, it's in the office. We, but regardless of the list, what I would like for you to do is, or what I would like for us to do is to actually hire anybody that applies for the lifeguard. Because the more we get, the better chance we have of covering those activities, because most of our people are involved in other activities, that's what we have, are the responsible young ladies and gentlemen, and they are involved in basketball camps and volleyball camps, and all of that stuff. So Nikki and I sat down and said, let's just hire them all.
Do you know how many?
Right now, we have seven or eight. The two Ostermeyer kids, um, Jackson, Weeble House. Anna Stephens is gonna be the, the, the assistant manager, yeah, she'll be there most every day, I mean, through the day. Nikki will come in at night. Pat Smith's wife has applied, and we wanna, we want to possibly offer some aerobics classes in the evening, or sometimes she can do those. Who am I leaving out?
Hannah Vanheek.
Hannah, yeah, Hannah Vanheek and the Sprockle girl. Yeah, I think that's it. So if I could ask for a motion to approve those? Now, don't hesitate, because Kalina's here.
I'm trying to get Don and Arlene after, I already made a couple.
Motion by?
I'll motion to hire Kalina as economic director, he's probably trying to think of who he's talking about. Economic director and, 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 uh, city ordinance. And then Nikki Sprockle as the swimming pool manager, and the aforementioned names for lifeguards.
Okay. And second by?
I'll second.
Okay, Arlene, so the voting will go, oh, I'm trying to switch this, I think you're supposed to do that. Pam?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay, we have a possible adjustment of the garbage rates, and we've been working on that today. They came out with a suggestion in November, um, and I think that we just never did vote on it, or never signed the contract.
No, Charlie, that, you transition into community.
Okay. So, um, do you have any kind of?
Yeah.
Tell me what, what they were going up.
It's, uh, residential rate is fourteen seventy-five per water meter household. Senior citizens rate is twelve thirty-five per water meter household. Extra container would be seven dollars and eight cents. The city shed, six yard dumpster, emptied once a week is twenty-five fifty per month. Fire station, uh, one ninety-six gallon tote, emptied one time a week for fourteen seventy-five per month.
That is the rate that arts will charge the city.
And we have not made any adjustment in our rates yet. Yeah, well, they can, they can, yes. Yeah, pretty much. So right now, we're making, what did we figure, two dollars? We're making about two dollars a customer, because when they went up, they went up like fifty cents?
Something like that, but I believe when Charlie, you guys asked last time, I used to cover the, some, City Health, that when they did the building and everything, cover that, it's friends on that side, I think, I don't.
Yeah, well, that. We, if we.
You might want to table this, but we'll give you a chance to make up a way for this to stop.
Okay.
Include the individual portion, because if you have this, then that's all because you have to pay, so you need to have, you need to have new ordinance.
Right. Right, and so we have, yeah, okay, so that's right. But right now, we're still okay, because we're making a little even at these rates, but, um, we, we will table this, so if we can do a, a new resolution, that will set new rates if we need to, to keep ourselves clear, okay? They're not a high rate, it's not a high jump, is what I'm saying. So, um, we should be, so we'll table that till next time. Okay, so consideration, um, and adoption of, we'll play, a resolution affirming the actions of the mayor and the council from the twelfth of December twenty eighteen to the present time. This, I think, is important, I want everybody to understand that we've been working with the, the two council members, who we feel is informed, that we want to, um, affirm all those actions taken, so that there is no question that our new council members, um, approve of what we've been doing since December, okay? And we have a resolution to that effect.
If someone can give us a rule for passage.
Yep, you have that resolution?
I have, but do we have a number on it?
No number here.
There's no number on the top.
Date, today, date, it's the, uh, three twenty.
Three twenty.
Three twenty nineteen, the resolution three twenty nineteen.
You need that.
Three twenty nineteen.
You need that, you were, yeah, all right, all right. I move to, uh, motion for the resolution number thirty-two zero one nine. Resolution of the city of Crofton to affirm and rat, ratify all actions of the mayor and the council from and after December twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Twenty-two present date.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, moved by Pam, seconded by Larry. So, uh, Don?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
Now we have the consideration and adoption possible of an ordinance to change the meeting date to the first Monday of the month, and I, I need to just quickly, because some of you might be wondering what's going on. We changed to a Wednesday, Wednesday is church night, has been church night for many, many years. We have people that work with young people and so forth at the churches, so we want to get away from that again if we can. I know, if, school activities and everything else every other night, Monday seems to be the night that everybody wants, that makes it difficult. So the first, the second Monday is the school board, the third Monday is the CCC. The fourth Monday, we talked about, that's a conflict with, uh, Mr. McNally, and the first Monday is a conflict with Mike Chase. So we decided, Mike Chase doesn't have to be here all the time. He actually, he said, um, I can work around that, so, okay? So we're gonna try and do the first Monday of each month. Now, since April first falls on Monday, there's no way that Kathy's gonna have those books closed out, and all the financial statements done, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we talked about this, so we're going to have, move this to the first of the month, with the understanding that all financial statements will be, not the prior month, but the month before. So on the first of April, we'll be looking at February's. This gives, uh, you know, by the time you get the closing out, and the bills, and all that stuff, that gives time to get not only the books done, the financial statements done, but to get them out to the, the, um, members of the council, and let them actually study them and, and, uh, know what's going on. We're not gonna do anything with financial statements tonight, we, she's got a lot done. We could do that for February, but we're gonna have a meeting April first, if we pass it. So, um, but we're also having Eddie May, who is the guy that runs the clerk book thing, coming in on Friday this week, so he's gonna make this a whole lot easier for us by changing some things around, I think, okay? So just, so everybody's got an explanation. So, uh, I would, I would entertain a motion to, uh, oh, we have an ordinance again.
Ordinance number?
Well, that we have to read.
This is an ordinance, which means that first you have to waive the reading on three separate occasions, and vote on that, and after that, then someone makes the motion to adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
And the ordinance could be a number of statements of resolution.
Okay.
Which would be three twenty nineteen.
Okay.
And so the first motion would be to waive the reading on three separate.
Do we have to read it by title? Okay, I would entertain a motion then to waive the three readings for ordinance number twenty.
Three two zero.
Three twenty, three two zero one nine.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, um, and second?
I'll second.
Okay, so it is motion by Larry and seconded by Arlene to waive the reading of the, um, of the ordinance. And, uh, let me get my order here, Arlene?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
And then we will entertain a motion to, uh, pass the ordinance, adopt the ordinance, same ordinance. So.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Arlene, and seconded by?
I'll second.
Seconded by Don to?
Now, before you vote, we have to read it by title.
Okay.
And it is an ordinance of the city of Crofton, Nebraska, to establishing a monthly regular meeting day of the city council, repealing all laws in conflict and providing an effective date.
Okay. And now we're going to call for the vote, and now we vote. Uh, so that would be Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Arlene?
Yes.
So that ordinance then is passed, or adopted. So number fourteen is consideration and adoption of another ordinance, which is to maintain, maintain the city's legal status as a second-class city. The city's population dropped under eight hundred some time ago, and it was a stat, that you have to apply, or you have to ask, uh, let's move, a- ask for permission, I guess, basically?
Well, the city council makes a determination as to whether or not they want to remain as a city of second class or go down through, uh, status of a bilic. And most small towns want to remain a city of second class, because then they don't have to change all their ordinance books and everything else, and so that's the whole purpose of this ordinance. After it's passed and adopted, we have to send a copy over to the Nebraska Secretary of State. Secretary of State will send us back a letter saying, all right, we recognize you as a city of second class, even though you have less than eight hundred population in town.
And the reason this has come up is because of just, we questioned whether, there was a question whether it had been registered at the Secretary of State.
Yes, the, the auditor mentions this audit report, and, um, I'm familiar with a number of bilics that haven't done this, but since it was mentioned in the audit report, doesn't hurt to do it.
So we want to do that in the same process? So, I need.
Three twenty nineteen bracket two bracket.
So I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of ordinance number three twenty nineteen, number two, um, and, okay, that, that, what I just said, I'll entertain that motion.
I'll, I'll motion to waive the reading for time.
The, at the waiving of the reading, and seconded by?
I'll second.
Larry, and the vote then goes, um, I lost it, uh, Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
And Arlene?
Yes.
Now, uh, we will consider the adoption, I need a motion to adopt the ordinance three twenty nineteen.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, Arlene, Arlene makes the motion, seconded by?
I'll say.
Don, and we.
Again, we have to read.
Oh, yeah, we have to read it.
We have to read it by title, and this is an ordinance of the city of Crofton, Nebraska, determining that Crofton shall remain a city of second class, and be governed by the laws of a second-class city, providing certification of sex actions, repealing all laws in conflict, and providing an effective. repealing all laws in conflict and providing an effective date.
Does my vote still count? Now I vote, okay. Um, Larry, or no, um, Pam?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay. And that is passed. Now, uh, the next one says that I will appoint committee heads pursuant to city code and state statute, um... We, well, we made this simple to get them all.
We don't have all the committee heads, should we table?
There are, if, if nobody, can we do that? Uh, 'cause I've still got two or three committees that I don't want to put together, so we can table that till next time. So we're gonna table that one, and we're gonna table the financial statements. But we've still got a little bit to do, and Pam will take a break. So, can we take just a quick break? Everybody, you know, stretch, take, bathroom break, whatever.
Okay, now, did we read that? Oh. Now, that's bad. Protritis is seven.
Oh, yep, yep.
Well, like, it's like when they adopt.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Yep.
Well...
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, yep. Well, I mean, I'll give... I don't think we said.
Yeah, we've got to come. Get all the brands.
I should probably.
Yes, yes. That's right, we need to do like.
I think it's elk ones. That's kind of where the elk ones.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, yep, that's right, thank you.
Guy with the ass, right?
Well, we did.
Oh, okay, that's right. That's in the paper. Is that a clock?
Engineer for the show.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Still got some thinking to do. And big ones. And I think that you were referring to.
We don't work.
And a little sun.
Did he lift it?
He had to go.
Now he needs a blizzard to keep his hood. Don't say that too loud.
He has enough fun.
Oh, wow, yeah. Well, you see, it's stupid, Uncle. He scooped up with a payroll. Yeah. Gravel horse. I was surprised, he just kept bringing it down. I figured, I wouldn't ride it all the way down like that. He walked it up.
It'll look at the other way. Since one book was right and the other is two books right, it's all over.
Okay, we're gonna go back to order here. We're gonna back up to the ordinance that has to do with Black Hills, the twenty-five-year lease, because we did not put an ordinance number on that. So we're gonna go back to that, so that would be ordinance number three twenty nineteen bracket three. And, um, we're going to do a motion to waive the reading, please. Um, somebody's motion to waive the reading. So motion.
I motion to waive the reading of Black Hills.
Okay.
Distribution and, uh, franchise.
And second?
I'll second it.
And, um, and, uh, the, the voting with Dawn?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
And then we need to read the ti- by title.
Well, you need a motion to adopt first and then after.
Add the motion. Okay, then we need a motion to adopt, um, the, the, um, ordinance dealing with the Black Hills gas distribution.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
And a second?
I'll second.
By Dawn, and so we are adopting an ordinance granting...
Yes, yes, yes. Ordinance granting Black Hills gas distribution LLC, DBA, Black Hills Energy, a Delaware corporation, its last e- successors, and assigns a natural gas franchise and the authority to conduct, operate, maintain, and extend a natural gas distribution plant and system and granting the right to use the freeds, alleys, and other public places within the city for future corporate limits of the city of Crofton, Nebraska.
And now the vote. Dawn?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Larry?
Yep.
And Pam?
Yep.
Now, um, we are going to, um, we tabled the, the, doing all the committee heads, but we're gonna go back to the Economic Development Committee. And I would entertain a motion to approve the chairmanship and the members of the Economic Development Committee, because they need to get started. Alan's really anxious to get his first meeting going. So we need to get them going. Um, Alan Arn would be the chairman. Um, Dustin Kinicky and Larry Cook and Marietta McFarlane and Evelyn Enney are the members. So if I could have a motion to approve that committee.
I'll make a motion to approve that committee for the economic development.
Okay, motion by Larry?
I'll second.
Second by Arlene. And the, um, voting, uh, Arlene?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
And Dawn?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the, the financial statements for February, we're gonna table. But, um, the, I talked with Larry at the bank the other day, and we have, uh, a chunk of money sitting there on the Sharon Street project. It's been there since it was paid, whatever, July or August, or whatever that was done. Um, we've made one payment. We have a, we have an interest payment that will be coming out at some point, um, I think June. And there's, um, sixty or seventy thousand dollars sitting there. It's getting the interest of an now account and the checking account. Um, I would entertain a motion, please, to put that into a CD so that we can look better. And that would be a fifty thousand dollar CD on a three-year basis, which is the best interest we can get. Uh, we might as well get all we can get. And, um, before we need to make any more payments, there'll be more payments coming in. So we will be fine.
And that was the Sharon Street assessment?
That's the Sharon Street. We'll just take it from the Sharon Street bank now account and put it into a CD. There'll still be enough money there to make the interest payment before any more cut, and then the, then the assessments will come in again. Okay?
Okay, so you want to put it on a three-year?
Three-year.
And then you still have the interest set back?
Yep.
To cover this?
Yep. And then the next payment will be covered by the end of the payments coming in.
And the city has a portion of that too. It's not just paid by a separate one assessment zone.
Yeah, we've, we've always, that the, the whole premise has always been that, that those assessments have to pay the payments. When in fact, the split was something like sixty, forty, that the payment that the city was to be paying. So we've got to find some funds, and it's the city funds to pay for that.
Okay.
Okay? Um, so I would entertain a motion of some...
I'll make a motion to put fifty thousand in a CD?
Okay, thank you.
For three years?
Second?
I'll second it.
Second by Pam. So voting goes, um, Larry?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And Arlene?
Yes.
Okay, uh, okay, there's the, the planes. We want to go through each of these. Okay. Okay. Um, this is something we promised we would do. Would we go through each one of these plane forms or planes? Um, move us, well, try to do it quickly, 'cause I know that your night gets long. But if anybody has any questions, that's what I, what we need to do. So, I'm gonna just run down the, um, um, list here. A and B is one of our local garages, of course. Uh, we have an eighty-seven dollars and fifty cent plane. It's a tire repair. We have arts, garbage, and that's our bill that we pay for everybody, forty-one hundred and five dollars and fifteen cents. Um, we have auto value. I'm gonna guess. Well, there was a special order.
Very exciting.
Larry, do you know what that is? Um, it just says cla- um, was that those belts on that, on that?
Yeah.
Was that? Yeah, the, the day we were late on the snow removal, they had a belt break and a flat tire. So two machines were down. So those are the repairs on them. Right? Is that, um, Black Hills Energy, eight hundred and sixty-six, twenty-seven. Blue Cross Blue Shield, fifteen seventy-eight, twelve. That's for the employees. Uh, Cedar Knox Public Power, the summary, um... Yep. Ten thousand, no.
That's the water that you're...
Uh, Public Power's two thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. That's what we were talking about earlier. Um, Cedar Knox Water, ten thousand dollars. Ten thousand, one fifty-six, four. So we buy a lot of water. One wonders why, in a data hunt, a week like this, why we buy a lot of water. Right? I mean, I...
Karen puts it all on a racer. Careful now. Careful.
It might go in there.
Uh, what's these?
Thank God, we'll go through my meter.
Okay, Cmart, um, eighteen eleven, that's propane. Um, then we have another one from them for two hundred and forty-six dollars.
Propane is actually C H S.
Okay. C H S. Um, Catons is two forty-six, ninety-eight, and that's probably all repair.
That's Cmart, four sixty-eight. You just got your pen on the wrong line. Here.
My glasses are not working again. Cmart's two forty-six. And that would be? Okay.
Catons.
Catons is a dollar thirty. Can't believe that one. Colonial Life is the insurance that is paid by the employees. It's just deducted from their check, so this doesn't cost the city. Three hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Twenty-six.
Twenty... Twenty-six, twenty-six. Um, sewer repair for NAPA, hundred and one forty-three. Crofton Journal, hundred and twenty-eight, eighty-six. Seventy-five dollars to, uh, Mr. Lucas, that's the welder. They welded some stuff out of the sewer plant.
That's insurance for the city.
Okay, EMC, the pe- the premium for this month, thirty-seven ninety point seven four. You heard the overall, so. Um, the Vista is? Twenty...
Two hundred and five thirteen.
That's two hundred and five twenty...
Thirteen here. Two hundred and five dollars and thirteen cents.
Okay. The, um, great planes, three twenty-one, sixty-one. That includes all of our homes. And that's, is that our cell phones?
That's internet, we're rising.
So what does this include?
Internet, landline, and internet.
Landline and internet.
Well, that's probably a lot.
Yeah, that's a lot higher.
Leaf.
Leaf.
Isn't that the test of water?
Water sample.
Copy release. Oh, copier.
Oh, copier, the copier for the, that's how much? Seventy? Seventy-five, yep.
Rec, these drummers. There's nothing here.
You have to...
I have that check over here. Okay. That's not a city expense. Look it up. We don't.
Okay. And Mr. McNally? Eleven thirty-three, no. Sixty-nine-four forty-four.
Which, I should mention, I don't see anything else on the agenda for me, and so point paying me to listen to the bills, so I'm gonna take them.
We thank you, and we'll pay you whatever you need.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure working for Crofton.
We, we have been very lucky to find this. Thank you.
Sure.
Big problems.
Yes. Oh, bless your heart. You probably can't get back in that way. Is that open? Mercoil. That's the next one, yeah? Mercoil Actress is seventy-five dollars. Okay, this is out of the sewer plant. We have a lot going on out there, don't we, Larry?
Yeah.
And, and I said earlier that maybe the water was in worse shape than the sewer, and you probably would question that sometimes, we've got a lot to do out there. Then we have... Midwest Laboratories, that's...
That's water.
Water testing, correct? We'll get to know these boats. Five-hundred-and-four, oh, we didn't say what it was, did we? How much do we pay to test?
One-seventy, twenty, and twenty-five cents.
So, how often do we test that? Larry, how often do we test that water?
What, on sewer?
No, the Midwest testing, isn't that a...
That's, that's the sewer.
That's the sewer?
Once a month.
It's what?
Once a month.
So that hundred costs a hundred-and-seventy dollars about every time?
So it is.
Okay. Will we, will we continue to always do that? No matter whether we build a new plant or not, so we know that everything... So, so we know everything's working right, the bacteria's working right, so, okay. This is good to know, to just know kind of what the maintenance and everything needs us to do. Midwest Service, five forty-one. Don't know what that is. Oh, that's our signs. Midwest Service, we bought two signs. Right, two? That say, no engine braking, and engine braking is prohibited. And just as soon as all the dirt cleans up, why the, the, actually, the highway guys have it out of the office at Hardington, they've got them in their possession. So, we'll stop some of the jake brakes. I should note too, that I am, and I'm taking input, anybody wants anything to say, but if you come off the hill from the east of town, you know, it's now worth sixty-five mile an hour. If you leave the corner at the cemetery, you don't see fifty-five till you drop over the hill. And then in just a short time, you see thirty-five. That's why they use the jake brakes partly, 'cause they probably got both brakes going. And on those days, yeah, I hadn't heard of it for a while, but those days that it was icy, you start hearing the jake brakes again, 'cause they're not gonna hit those, the, the regular brakes in that ice. So, so, anyway, we'll work with them, I'm thinking, I'll talk with the state and see what, you know, whatever, I don't think we'd have to have an ordinance. But I think it would be nice if back up the road, we would have one of those little square signs, you know, that says lower speeds up ahead and stuff, and kind of give a warning. And then we'll get, I'll talk to the cop and say, you set up there, you stop him every time. But you know, we think about, I always think of that site because I live there, but I hear people on the west side talk about the jake brakes coming in too. You would think that come uphill, they wouldn't have to use them. So, we just, we just need to help with our traffic as much as we can, that's what I wanna do, is get enough signs out there that catches their attention. Maybe, I've seen signs at the edge of town sometimes, but we need to, to stay conscious. Saw a car take off today going east and pass somebody right at Second Street, probably around an eighty, gone. And that's the value of our part-time cop, if they can just be in the right place at the right time. You, you just, you know, you wanna step up in front of them, but...
This is the charge here from Midwest Service, it also includes some bucket edge for the payloader, that's not all street signs.
I can't imagine why we'd have street signs from... Yeah, I know it does, it's two invoices. Well, I think we ordered this stuff apparently, right? Yep, yep. Yep. Okay, so the next one is a mileage and an attendance at the planning and zoning in Carney for Mike Chase, Michael Chase. And the whole thing came up too. Is that four?
Yep.
Is that four twenty-seven? Four twenty-seven eighty-nine. Two-day conference, two hotels, two motels, mileage, and then he had some mileage back and forth to center on a couple of other of the things that he was finishing up. So, that's well spent. The Modern Woodman is insurance, or not insurance, IRA retirement, and it was a hundred and... No, what is that?
Eight ninety-eight.
Eight ninety-eight?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, okay. And that, again, is three percent of the wage goes to the retirement. But they also can match them, so that's not all our money. Okay? Oh, look at that. Okay. Municipal Supply of Omaha.
That's all repair bands and stuff, sure.
Okay. Is that for, like, just equipment, or is it...
That's, that's for the rates on the water, repair bands and curb box risers.
Okay, so it's mostly water?
Yes.
Okay, water expense, sixteen-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars twenty-six cents. And that's repaired, that's not new, so that's what we need to keep looking at. These are the things that become important, you know, when we're talking about the cost of doing something, or the cost of not doing something, and I, and I agree with Karen, we need to really, really look at all that work. If, you know, I'm, if we can shoot in a block at a time, if that's all we can afford, then that's what we do. Okay, what's the next, hey, the auditors? The auditors? The auditors? Is this from last year?
Yep.
This is two years ago.
No.
This is three years ago.
I don't know, you forgot the first one.
This serves as the final bill for work performed in relation to the audit of the city of Crofton for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty-seventeen. Two years ago, or two years ago. This was sixteen-seventeen. The total bill was thirteen-hundred-nine-eight-oh-seven, or eight-oh-six. We paid a thousand dollars every month, this is final bill apparently. The next year, we paid them fifty grand, and we, that's why we cashed on CDs, paid them all at once. And then I don't remember what last year was.
That's not the final bill.
What says this serves as the final bill?
Yeah, but we were paying on that for months and months and months and months.
Then why did they say it's final bill?
'Cause that's the last twenty cents.
So how much do we still owe?
Depends on what they charge us.
Yeah, well, well, no, 'cause they don't add them together.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll figure it out. Yeah, we'll figure it out. We're paying them a thousand dollars, and we haven't been billed for this year's. But they are done. So the next one is... Public, Nebraska Public Health and Gardening Lab. This is something... This is lab work, right, that on the...
This is water.
Water, on the water test.
This is water, and we got the, uh, yeah, on quarterly test there too, that's a lot bigger test.
Five hundred bucks.
And we got that, and we got the regular, every month, water test on there too.
Okay. Yep. Gosh, turn. Hard to pay the pennies. One call contest. Yeah, it's five dollars and sixty cents, so...
That's your Digger's Holland.
Digger's Holland, thank you. I love their surcharges. Fifteen cents. And there's one source, one, that's who we get all of our paper supplies and that kind of thing from. And we've got sixty-nine thirty-four. Copyright color. Storage boxes, et cetera. We bought also, we bought, like, some punch and, three-hole punch and a different telephone, because the other one was whatever, so we can, we got Kathy's severe bone, so that she can not lose her bone and, and she can be doing, you know, have things in her hands, because that's very difficult to try and shift through stuff, so I don't think we even had time to do it. Oh, I've got Menards and some things here, and I thought, how come we got these all put together? Well, this goes to Mr. Hookstein, Mr. Patrick bought some things and we're reimbursing him. Okay, good, oh, that was how much total?
One oh-six thirty-nine.
One oh-six thirty-nine, and that was just stuff we needed for water repair and...
Just we do like water repair.
Yep. And Peoples, twenty-seven sixty-five. Says something about water on there again. Power, and one oh-four eighty-six. You know, these are, there's just a lot of them. That must be more repair. And Stephens, eight eighty forty-five, and that's gonna be mostly gas, I think, yeah. And another Stephens for thirty bucks. And that...
That's Jerry again.
Is that Jerry? Uh, uh, well, we will pay that one. Thirty-second time. Well, you billed us once, you don't get to bill us twice.
No double jeopardy.
Sunbeck Underground, seven fifty, install water line. So that's backhoe and probably or something to that effect. Then we have Tel Aviv Wireless, and that's twenty-two eighty-nine. Tim Arn's, sixteen hundred.
Seven thousand.
That's only one of them.
Seven thousand, fifty dollars.
Seven thousand dollars.
That's for the water breaks?
It's for the water breaks. And one of these was sent to the Ponca Drive, one of them he did was not, is not in here, right?
Yep, it's included. They'll reimburse us.
That's, that's put that one in there too, yep.
One of the, one of these...
We sent a bill to Ponca.
Oh, yeah, we, we...
But they will reimburse us.
Yeah, okay, so we're paying it, they're gonna pay us. The, the break of, on the Ponca property there, they're gonna pay for that. They, I talked with the gentleman, and he was, boy, the nice and, that send us everything, so. We'll be reimbursed on that. EMC is the renewal, this is thirty-seven. Thirty-seven ninety seventy-four.
Did we, are we paying? Yes, that's, that's the one we missed. Oh, okay, that's right. Yep.
Yeah, we, yeah, on one of the invoices, and they, they put the money upfront for us and paid the premium and then...
Because where our meeting fell?
Yep.
In, in paying bills, they had carry it for us till we approved it, so now we're paying them back.
So, Horizon, a hundred-and-fifteen seventeen. So we have two phone bills. Wes Hodson. Did Kelly leave? I can't give him a bad time. Fifty-five fifteen. And that's, you know, th- those are little things, and we picked up some big trash bags and stuff to get stuff, we've got fluorescent bulbs that happened, didn't work, you couldn't see anything, so we kinda cleaned up everything in, in the office. That's Pam and Irma's work in there cleaning and getting my calls so we can see and get the trash out. So then we have Yankton Fire and Safety, what did they do for us?
Fire stewardship inspections.
Okay, one thirty-four twenty-five, we've gotta have those inspections done on the fire. So, no problem.
Don't get cramped when you sign on.
I got a question. You guys, last month ago, you guys put a new battery in that car park? Yeah, we put a battery in something when he said the battery was going dead in the car all the time.
I think that was that patrol car, I think they...
That patrol, that black one?
What?
The black car?
Yeah.
Okay, when I brought it back from Iberia, turned it off, put it in the shed, our battery's dead, it's going.
Did you put a battery in there?
No, but that, you gotta, you gotta look at that, there's a memory in there that has drawn current.
Someplace, I mean, we gotta...
And now that battery went totally dead, you're gonna have to have that car reprogrammed. 'Cause when you change a battery, you take it out of there, you gotta put another battery, hook it up to it, so you don't lose the current, 'cause if you do, you're gonna lose your program. So if that battery's totally dead now, there's a pretty good chance you're gonna have that...
They may, they may have taken the battery out of that, see, Iberia, 'cause they had it over there.
Well, we have...
That battery was replaced before we took it in Iberia.
Exactly, and now, I turned it off, pulled the key out.
Yeah, but, but it shouldn't have, if, if they didn't disconnect it, it shouldn't have, okay?
We gotta call...
Find out whether they had disconnected.
Yeah, that's what we need to do.
Oh, I, and I forgot the estimated claims, and that would be payroll for two period, and also the insurance. Okay, so it's just the payroll, and the IRAs, and I'm big for next to payroll, okay?
So, question?
Yes.
We've, the first bank card on the front page, two oh-five thirteen, is the estimate back here, is that credit card?
We always estimate the bank card, yeah.
Okay, but this was the act?
Yeah. And I've asked about that, for those of you that care, that I've asked about why we use that credit card, that they use it to mail off the samples and all that kind of stuff, it's just easier to handle. And, those have all been, the new credit cards have been issued, right, Pam? So, everyone that's supposed to have them has them. So I would entertain a motion to approve the invoices. I'd entertain a motion to approve the invoice.
I'll make a motion to approve the invoices.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thanks, Don, so, moved by Larry and Pam. Thanks, Don, but so, um, moved by Larry and seconded by Don. To approve the invoices, Pam?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, I want to announce that there will be a special meeting on March the twenty-fifth. Um, there will be no city business basically that takes place that day, it's on Monday, it's at ten o'clock in the morning, and I, until when, I don't know, okay? This will be, um, the engineers who are doing the sewer plant, the engineers who are our city, engineers, um, will be the, one of the funding companies, USDA that wants us to do the lagoon. He wants to bring along a guy from Midwest, Midwest agency, whatever that's called. And we're just gonna talk about the problems of the sewer plant, and I don't get, because what I, Ryan is the contact person, right, Larry, you've talked to him. Uh, I, I hadn't talked to him until recently, uh, and I just said, I really don't know where we are, I don't know what you've done, I don't know what your plans are, uh, we have, um, I really liked them when they came and presented, Larry's happy, I think, with what is happening, but we just don't know where they are and what's going next. So, I asked him if we could get, you know, more involved, and, um, I'm looking around to see who all's here. JEO is our city engineer. There, there's, um, you remember, folks, and I want everybody to know this, and I don't care if you go out and tell people, this is what we need to know, it's very important. Our city engineer, when I talked to them, and said, so what are you gonna charge us to be our city engineer, and they said nothing. And I said, you can't operate that way. And they said, we work for you in the hopes that you will give us one of your projects. And they have already done a bit of this and that. Our, our one and six-year plan, um, they are, we get paid by the state. The one and six-year, I should say, the street superintendent has three jobs, he does, he draws up this one and six-year plan. Halfway through the year, he reaches to the state, halfway through this year, they do a lane report, and they said a lane is like what a car drives on, so the highway would be a two-lane. So they count the lanes and the households or people or whatever, and they do this report. And based on that, the state decides how many, how much money we get to fix our streets. They also decide how much we get to pay our street superintendent. So the state gives us money to help pay for the street superintendent. And he's figured it out, and he said, that'll be a thousand dollars, and I said, so what are you gonna charge us? And he said, the thousand dollars. It passes through. So everything JEO's done for us, we've paid him nothing. So I wanna find a project for him, right? I think we've got enough projects, we can give him at least one somewhere. They've already given me lots of brochures for each one of them, folks. And they all, and they do, and they have, they're known as one of the best ones, so that's gonna be able to touch you, but, um, but I, I just want you to know that, that we want to reach out to these people that try to help us, and just like Black Hill said, I'm not just here and then gone and forget you for twenty-five years. So if they're willing to help us look for grants and do all this, I, I'm finding out that, um, that you reach out to everybody you can. And that's something I think we failed to do in the last couple of years. So, I, I'm, I've gotta open the door to anybody that will even sneeze for me, you know? We'll, we'll appreciate it. So that's where we are, um, the, that, that, I'm, I'm saying, I want JEO to be, to sometime help me with Ryan, not because I don't trust Ryan, the project engineer on the sewer, but because we're common people, we don't understand the jargon. We don't understand when they talk about this or that, kind of design or this or that problem. The maintenance people probably have the best chance of understanding that, they may not understand it all, so let's get somebody that could say, no, now wait a minute, maybe you should look at something else. So, the lady, there's a lady named Bill, Larry and I both believe she's a gun hog gal, she's out to make sales, that's okay. But she already called me and said, I wanna meet with you, and we wound up meeting in Stanton, because I'm down there working on that house, and she met me there and took me out to lunch and this and that, and she said, let us go, you know, if they don't do it right, we'll take over, let us, you know, let us build swim school, let us design this, let us. So, she's the one that said, let's have a meeting, talk about all this. So, come to the meeting if you want to, it's an open meeting. We're gonna call a, a city council meeting, and we won't do any of this, we're gonna turn it over to them, but because we'll have a forum, we don't want any open meeting laws violated. So we'll call a meeting, turn it over, let them say whatever they want to, if they want to stay till afternoon, they can, we'll go out and eat, you know? But we're starting at ten o'clock in the morning, I know that's not a time for people that work, but that makes, they come from Waukesha and Omaha, and stuff, they don't want to call in here too late at night, okay? So that's what this meeting is about, and I think we've already focused on that, have we not already put that to page? Then there will be that special meeting about Devon Jewellian's liquor license, and if they decide that, that's, if anything comes up about, we would like to know, but that, that will be like six o'clock, and it'll be a matter of approving, but. But it will be a hearing, that's why it has to be out seven days, it will be a hearing. I don't wanna, I don't want to minimize the fact that people have a right to come to that hearing, and if they disagree, that's what the hearing's about, just like the hearing tonight was, if you disagree with that one and six-year plan, you have a right to say something. Hearings are held for the public to voice their opinion. Okay? We're not gonna shut anybody down, we're limited to two minutes. So if you have something to say, then you come to those hearings. And then our next meeting will be April Fool's Day, okay, on April first, and that's that first Monday of that month. I think, um, we have a possible executive session, but I think we're gonna skip that. Right? You really shouldn't care, but I think we need to do some more work on it, yeah, and I think we need.
That's, the, what we're not going into the executive session on is, we've had, oh, probably about a half a dozen water bills that needed some going over. We've got, uh, we've got to put it on the agenda, so we can't do it, but they have been addressed, and we're just about ready to tie them all up, so.
Okay.
Hopefully we can do that.
All right.
April first?
Yeah, yeah. Because we're not too far out. So I would entertain a motion to, Chair?
I'll make a motion.
I'll sign it.
So, uh, Don?
Yes.
And Arlene?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
So we will adjourn at.